All this meeting to order October 3rd, 2023, one day before ten four. Please stand and join us for the Pledgeable Edgents. All right. Good morning, all. We do have a quorum present with all five commissioners in attendance today. Commissioners, if you've had a chance to review the agenda and you don't have any changes, what is your pleasure?
I thought we did have changes, Mr. Chairman.
Not that I'm aware of. No changes here. Any other changes?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the agenda.
Got a motion to approve the agenda as presented by Commissioner Tolman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Falls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion's unanimous. First on the agenda under Tab A today is a public hearing for the Wyoming Library Multi-Purpose Community Facility Program Grant Application for the Sweetwater County Library System. We've got Christina Marcelle, County Grants Manager, and Lindsay Travis, the library director with us this morning. This was presented to us last meeting. For approval to move forward with applying for the grants, I believe, and part of that process, we do need to have a public hearing for such. You have anything you want to speak to Christina or Lindsay before we open it up?
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So as the chairman stated, you all authorized the preparation of this grant application. An important part of the process is making sure the community has the opportunity to either support the project, critique the project, or say, no, don't proceed. So I just want to let you know. I did advertise a public notice, which was included in your packet. We do intend of meeting the deadline of next Monday. There were no comments emailed to me or submitted in writing. So with that, I would just ask that you open a public hearing to solicit comments for this project, and you can close it as well after that. Okay?
Thanks, Christina. So no action taken since we already did last meeting. It's just the procedural aspect of it.
Mr. Chairman, that is correct. And again, we want community engagement. So.
Sure. Thanks, Christina. Any comments, Commissioners, before we open it up? This time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for the Wyoming Library Multi-Purpose Community Facility Program Grant Application for the Sweetwater County Libraries. This time, if there's anyone online or in attendance who would like to speak to this grant application, now would be the appropriate time. Seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And wish the library luck in moving forward with the grant. Simple. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is the County Resident Comments and Concerns portion of the agenda. This time, if there's anyone in the audience or online that would like to address the governing body on any issue whatsoever, now would be the appropriate time. Morning, Senator Cole.
Enough anyone who's gonna knock me down when I got up here, but it looks like it's free and clear to walk. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of County Commissioners. I just wanted to first off throw an invite out to the Board of County Commissioners, whoever you wish is the person that may interact with the Select Federal Natural Resource Management Committee, which is a meeting that's going to be at the end of this week on the sixth. They're going to allow comment on this relates to the RMP Research Management Plan, not Rocky Mountain Power. And to have comment, and I thought it was appropriate. I had spoken to the Chairman Chairman Boner on the Senate side about the invite, and he extends the invite to you, anyone who wishes to participate to comment about the topic, which is going to be about the RMP, and it's I think it's headlined by thirty by thirty on the agenda. I wanted to put that out there. Then I missed the my past opportunities to speak about this, and so I'm a little
Can't let it go.
A little late, and I can't let it go. No, I can't. And my my deep concern is, is the process that how we got to this point. I'm, you know, I don't understand where the general public representation's at, you know, is it something that BLM skipped over, which appears to be part of it, but more importantly, the cooperating agencies, what in the Hades of heck happened here? I don't know if they're just doing their special interests. I don't know. My and my concern is, is the future. We only we have something currently we're dealing with. But if we have to reevaluate something in the future, like how we develop these plans, I think it's clear that it didn't work out well. You know, the outcome is terrible. And I think my, and I was a commissioner during the original part of this RMP process that we let another commissioner take lead on it. And I can tell you, from what I know now, I'm ashamed to say I let that happen. I don't think the outcome was appropriate. I thought it didn't represent the best interest of the people in Sweetwater County, which is clear. And I wish, I guess my concern is the future. What are we going to do? It seems like we have to do something different. What we, what the outcome is is totally one-sided. And if we're, you guys are the representatives of the people. I mean, I run a small district senate district, you know, twelve, twelve, which is Rock Springs, most of Rock Springs and most north of town. But you know, this is a countywide issuing beyond that with the RMP, but we're trying to do the best we can to help everybody and and work together and illuminate what's going on here with the RMP because there's many, there's many different issues to look at this, but I just tell you on this, on the, on the, on the plans, A, B, C, and D, A being current, and then B, C, and D being, you know, left, everything's left of A is my, is my concern about this whole thing. If we were going to bargain, why in the, why in the heck did we ended up giving away and losing to the left? Everything goes towards the environmental side. B, obviously the worst. C is no jewel. It isn't, you know, pro. It doesn't release any lands that were previously controlled in A. And we sit there losing. We just moved the whole thing to the left. And then we negotiate where to the left. So that's my real concern. And I don't, I don't know if I'm part to blame for this RMP debacle, because I let my elected duty go to, I believe, somebody else was looking out after the best interest of the county, and apparently not so. But I just, I guess I want to express that concern. And I want to do whatever we can to help at a state level to work together. I can tell you publicly that the conversation we're currently having is bringing up $10 million of coal litigation money and using it to deal with the federal government, the RMP, what they've done. And there's a, the motion was made to fully fund the Fronopa account, which helps localities like this, my understanding of that money, to fight the battle. So we're doing, we're doing what they can monetarily at the state level, but obviously our path is working together. And I just want to throw that out there, and I apologize for not being here earlier. I didn't realize I guess, just how this was going to go in in past meetings. So I'm here today trying to to just to state that, and I appreciate you folks taking your time, the commission to to listen to, I guess, my concern is being a senator.
Thanks, Senator. Appreciate you coming over this morning and sharing some of your thoughts. When is that meeting? I know you said Friday the sixth, but is that Zoom? Is that in person? Where is that meeting?
It is, in fact, in the Thibaut Thompson Building in Casper. You can participate on Zoom. You can go online and register as a commenter. And it's going to be probably around three o'clock to say four o'clock. Obviously, it depends how the meeting goes. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of discussion about where we are and what we're going to do. So yeah, you can attend during Zoom and be a participant and be, I think, you know, it sounds appropriate to me, but it's up to you. You folks are the commission, not me.
Well, part of the frustration in this process is kind of what it's felt like being last minute and a rushed, all of a sudden plan that has been something that's been in the works for, I think we've heard twelve years, and so now everyone's trying to scramble and figure out what's the best approach to it. And I think as a commission, we've identified that, and obviously it's had a huge, you know, public outcry and concern from constituents and residents of Sweetwater, and I think that's a good thing. Everyone's showing up, you know, the BLM public meeting last week wasn't really a public meeting. It was more just an open house. Which, you know, you can critique in some areas, but at least it gave some insight to, you know, the maps and the plans and, you know, the B, C, and D's that are much better than one or the other. So there's a sense of leave it the way it is. We appreciate, you know, the open backyard, so to speak, but will they do that? I think from our perspective, as we continue to dissect through this process, you know, we're trying to focus more on the procedural aspects of it and what they didn't do, or what they haven't done, or what wasn't followed, and trying to kind of hone in on that, more of the, you know, boots on the ground type of approach. So we're happy to assist, work together. We appreciate your cooperation. Obviously, there wasn't much cooperation with the BLM and us as a cooperator status, so that does need to be improved moving forward, and I think we'll continue to hone in on that. But one of us, I'm certain will be there on Friday to help kind of spread our position on this. As of now, we're just kind of identifying that we don't agree with the preferred alternative, but in form of a, you know, eighty day response period that was ninety, but now eighty, and now, you know, basically down to almost thirty. You know, we got some fast movement to make, so we want to make sure we do it strategically and cross all the Ts and dot the Is in the process.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tolman.
I want to thank Senator Cole for coming in and having a discussion with me about the RMP, and we looked through the printed copies of the maps. I think we need to have another meeting. I mean, the cooperating agency handbook that I gave you explains the process, and we were at the table. We were defending multiple use of sustained yield as as locally elected cooperators being the voice of the people. But we did not get to have the final say as to what the national director chose to put out as the preferred alternative. So I think we need to have some further discussions about the cooperating role. It is a powerful role. This administration is trying to water that role down also by making the whole entire process a public process through the Council on Environmental Quality. So I'm not going to say anymore now. It's just, I think we need to have further discussion as far as the understanding of what the cooperating agency role is. And this director did say at our, at our cooperator meeting, the day after the preferred had been announced, she said cooperating agencies, harness your power, your voice has more legal standing than anybody else's because you've been at the table for twelve years. And we didn't get our way all the way, but I'll tell you, it's better than than what they chose to give us as as the extreme for the preferred alternative. That was to have been analyzed as the extreme for the conservation. It doesn't defend multiple use and sustained yield. So I'll just leave it at that, and we'll have further discussion. I don't want to take too long right now, but people need to understand the cooperating agency role. You sit at the table for tons of meetings with the with the agency technical teams and and you support what your county believes in based on your federal plan, which we finally got approved last year. Our federal plan for this county says what we believe about each of those things. And the governor, in his consistency review, after their ninety day comment period, the governor's consistency review, our legal team works with the governor's office to point out how they weren't consistent with what our plan says.
Mr. Chairman, could I just respond to that? Yeah. Commissioner Tolman, the issue is this, it's beyond what you're talking about. The issue is multiple use, right? And my point is, is that the special interest, the cooperators were defending whatever position they wanted to take, right? But the multiple use aspect of this plan, which the BLM, according to their own words, is going to decide administratively without public input. That is my deepest concern. I mean, I'm, I'm trying to protect the general public, my, my thought. That's my goal. And so I think it's just a different battle we're talking about fighting here, and my concern is, is the BLM is, like you said, I mean, they violated many things. However, what can we do to to make sure this plan develops better in the future than it currently looks?
We're all working together. The State Association, they're writing letters too. I mean, all, a lot of the state agencies are writing letters, but that's all I'll say right now is to ask for more time to call them thirteen hundred pages. Barry Bingo, I'm sure he's gotten through all thirteen hundred pages with Don. It's impossible. You can't, you can't analyze that much in ninety days.
Mr. Slaughter?
Mr. Chairman, Senator Gold, I'd like to thank you once again for being here. Your point is extremely well taken. I think obviously we need to be at the table. I think that we have been at the table. Coming in after the fact and seeing the information that I have seen on what took place with our cooperator status and what took place with other stakeholders, I believe that we were involved, and I believe we were trying to come up with a solution. I think what we're facing is exactly what you've said. We're facing a heavy-handed, top-down approach from our current federal administration. And the way to avoid that is to have a different federal administration. As long as we're in this position where the, the I'll say the strong left is forcing things down our throats, we're going to continue facing this, and we'll see actions such as this from our federal partners coming out of that federal agency or coming from that federal administration. So I think that's where it lies. I agree one hundred percent. We need to be on top of this, and we will certainly continue to try and do that. We spent all last week, or I should say Commissioner Tolman and I spent all last week at the Wyoming Association of County Officers. Most of our time was spent talking with the other accounting commissioners who were there and other legislators and things of that nature about this plan and exactly what you're talking about, trying to move forward.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Richards, I I had a lot of comments in my commissioner comments about this, so I won't go too deep, but one of the things Senator Cole is is talking about is is the alternatives that came out of the the cooperator meetings. Our losses across the board. One of the maps that is identical in in all three, B, C, and D, is the map of ORV restrictions to designated roads. And as I discussed with one or two of you this morning, I've had constituent complaints that the BLM is writing people tickets in those areas right now where you're where you're restricted to designated roads. The BLM is writing people tickets for being on existing two-track roads. If they're doing that out in the the far reaches of the county where there is already ORV restrictions to designated roads, and and I believe the Conservation District has probably taken inventory and designated a lot of those two-track roads as roads. If they're doing that now, if this new map is is adopted, and it's the same map in B, C, and D, it's an identical map, then you won't be able to ride an ORV on a two-track road anywhere on BLM land in Sweetwater County. So something, there had to be some kind of disconnect in the cooperator status to get that very same map across all three proposed alternatives. And of course, we ended up with the with the agency preferred alternative being the absolute worst one for Sweetwater County, but but as Senator Cole has mentioned, I'm not convinced that any of the three alternatives are great for Sweetwater County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, could I respond to that? So the county, back when I was county commissioner, spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on mapping said roads. And I believe the inventory at last count was thirty-two thousand miles of identified two-track roads that existed prior to the federal government saying that if it didn't exist, I don't, Mary could probably, Senator, or Senator, Commissioner Tolman could probably comment about the, 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 the federal guidelines that we were trying to circumvent from closing down two tracks. Now, what I understand is RMP to to actually say, barring the BLM statement recently, that oh, it shouldn't be in there, which I find preposterous. And I'll call that hyperbole for the newspaper because they choose to use that word when people spoke of this. That if they don't identify said road, the road does not exist. And being that document has no identified BLM roads in it, because they didn't produce any maps, that means there is, in fact, no BLM roads, and there is no access. And they're going to decide administratively on their own what roads are going to be appropriate. And I think the quote was, is, you know, basically, don't worry, we'll take care of that. Well, they probably will take care of that. But not in the way that we like in that, also those roads, all the money we spent on mapping in the past is going to be for naught. And that's the part of this whole plan that's really clear that it's a problem, as Commissioner Richards stated. All three alternatives are identical. Well, what in the heck type of an alternative is that? I mean, that's not an alternative. That's, it's in fact a lie. I mean, that is, in fact, identical plans with no identification of roads. So we're facing the no ability to use any of those roads. Certainly, the two-track roads are out. I would argue that most of the other roads are going to be out too unless they designate them as BLM roads. And I haven't seen a map that shows what those roads are, so there isn't any.
Yeah, I think that's part of the lack of trust when that was rolled out, and that point was made in regards to the I think it was around fourteen thousand miles worth of of roads that shouldn't have been in there. Well, that's, that's a big one. I mean, that hits home, and it's probably the, one of the bigger concerns, not necessarily the biggest. I think they're all big concerns, but you know, just saying that that shouldn't be in there, and there's this confusion about why it's in there, and don't worry, we'll redline that. Well, that doesn't really produce much trust on you know, the form of the public or certainly the cooperators. So again, I think that just points to the fact that it was a rushed release and maybe one that needed revisited and wasn't revisited with due diligence, so.
Mr. Chairman, there is a lot of misinformation out there. After twelve years of sitting in those meetings, we did sit down with the with the BLM staff and the cooperators, and we went through zones, and we identified roads, but this plan does not include a transportation plan. That's another plan, the sage grous plan, the wild horse plan, they're going to be layered on this later. The only road you should be getting a ticket on right now would be if you're in a wilderness area or a wilderness study area, and even a bicycle is a mechanized vehicle cannot be in a wilderness area or a wilderness study area. So there should be no tickets given. But when they declare an ACEC, they can put stipulations on it saying that, oh, for eagle raptor nesting from January till July thirty-first, no one can go in there. So that's how they're how they're controlling your access is through wildlife, special elk, deer, antelope, partridge in areas, sage grouse nesting. The ACECs will be developed around special species and the timing of when they need protection. So that's why those roads are listed in that thing as so many miles being closed. But right now, there should be nothing except wilderness or wilderness study areas because the transportation plan. We did sit down and BLM did honor, as far as the cooperators knew, all of the existing BLM roads unless it was a survey road or something. There was a parallel road or something that was totally not necessary. They pretty well worked with us through all of that planning and mapping, and then we came to the county for mapping to have Kent Fillerman develop that map. He found the map on the BLM website that lists every trail in the entire county. So through the cooperative process, it was addressed, but they released this plan with all the pieces still left out. So you're going to get the sage grouse EIS, the Rocky Mountain one, after we've done it four times. They're going to come in, and then they're going to say, oh, now there's different areas that are going to be closed to oil and gas development because of sage grouse, but that's not in that plan yet. So you just need to understand the process of the steps that we went through with with the BLM to get to where where we are with it. And yes, it is it is scary because Washington is deciding all these things. They're making us redo the sage gouse plan. You know, we don't know what they'll do with the transportation plan. We've done the work. We've done the work.
Mr. Chairman. So to your point, Commissioner Tolman, there's also another part of the issue with, say, raptor nests. And it isn't just current raptor nest. They label them as I'll use the word potential. They've been used in the past, right? That's within the document. So all they have to do is run out there and say sometime in the past, there's been a raptor nest over here. So now this area is going to be regulated because of that fact.
Yeah, we fought that, but Washington DC is deciding, you know, they're putting their, their heavy stamp on it. I mean, we just have to take it through the process, challenge it, appeal it, and and just hope that we could get a better decision from a judge based on the definition of multiple use and sustained yield. But we have done it before through the coalition. We've challenged the Rollins Plan on Visual Resource Management. We've challenged every one of these plans through the coalition. We're not afraid to challenge them on the issues that are legally wrong. Doesn't mean we always win, but it's for the record that we've done it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we intend to win. We intend to fund this thing with every money that are needed to defend ourselves. And I want to add one thing about that. Realize the cost, the cost that we're talking about is justifiable because of the loss of revenue for everybody. Sweetwater County, the state of Wyoming, everybody included. I want people to know that the money that we have to divert to fight this fight will directly take away from other services the state currently provides. There is a cost to doing business, and obviously, we don't print money. We actually have a balanced budget in the state of Wyoming, unlike the federal government. So we have to divert money, but it's, it's, it's not really a question at this point because it's mandatory. And we, if we don't defend ourselves now, we're going to set the framework for the future. And if we lose, we lose, we lose our future.
Thanks for understanding that and supporting that.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jones?
Excuse me. Commissioner Tolman, did you say that the BLM has the map of their roads and trails on their website?
They removed it after we there may be a map there, but it's not the one that had everything on it. We have that here in the county and through the conservation. We have that original map.
Because I've looked and I've requested more than once from the BLM for the map, their map, and have nothing. So that's, I didn't know if there was something out there. I just wanted to.
We've got it. We've got it.
We don't have the BLM map, though.
We have that one that was pulled from the website, the original one, and that's the one we took to the zone meetings when we were having the zone meetings at Zone So-and-so. We sat down with the staff and said, what roads do you absolutely want to keep and which roads can we let go? We use that map as our basis. Megan can pull it up through our, we've got the database.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, Commissioners? Well, Senator, we appreciate you coming over this morning. We're going to continue to sort through this. I know we've got a lot more comments on it. We do have a letter prepared this morning that's up for approval in regards to the withdrawal request of it, and we'll continue to chip away, but we appreciate your willingness to work with us and work together as a team to try and fight for what's best for Sweetwater.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. Word of County Commissioners, appreciate your time and my opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thanks for coming during public comment.
Well, you're most certainly welcome. I am a slow learner, but I still can learn. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We are still under the County Resident Comments and Concerns portion of the agenda. This time, if there's anyone else that would like to address the governing body at this time, now would be appropriate.
It's important that you read the Desktop Guide for Cooperating Agency. I give you a copy. I give all the Commissioners a copy. That was published, has quotes from fellow Commissioners. Right after Jack Maro Hills was developed in two thousand and twelve, they printed that book, and it's still on the website. Desktop Guide for Cooperating Agencies explains the process and how you have to challenge it.
Any other county resident comments or concerns? Sure, please do. Yeah, just because it's being recorded, so there's people watching online. So if you could come up and introduce yourself.
Dan Ferguson. Dan Ferguson is my name. And anyway, I had friends that wanted to show up and couldn't. But anyway, there was a question on the recent we've been reading about the mining operation south of Green River, and the question that that I was asked to ask was, are we okay with a foreign-owned company involved with nuclear here in Sweetwater County? So that's what, that's So that's what, that's what we've been reading about that. Their uh power source is going to be a a nuclear reactor out here. And uh, you know, there should be some, that's gonna. You know, that's going to be a topic of discussion. And uh, are we? We got a uh. How are we thinking about that now?
Sure. No, we appreciate you coming here, Mister Ferguson. Are you talking in regards to that article that was released last week for? I don't have a whole lot of information about it. Obviously, we've seen um. You know, with. All the movement that's heading towards, you know, camera and that's. A nuclear operation, but there is a meeting um on Wednesday, the fifth, which is in regards to the growth and expansion panel here at the commission chambers. Excuse me, Thursday, um, October fifth from six thirty to eight o'clock here. And we're, they're supposed to have some more information on that, but it's very preliminary. So we, you know, I'm sure our land use office. Has uh some more information on it, but as far as anything we've heard, it's it's basically the same of what you brought forth. But any of those, you know, processes or permitting or any of those steps are, you know, heavily vetted and and gone through and. You know, there's a process with that, so.
Well, I hope so. Uh, you know, uh, we've got various footprints across the Wyoming now and. Nuclear is something that's new and I'm pretty apprehensive about it myself. Uh. It's a power source, uh, cannot be safe, safely utilized. We need to talk about it, especially if there's a foreign foreign interest involved in it. I think that that's a. That needs to be addressed.
Well, we appreciate that. We'll continue to keep an eye on it and as we learn more throughout that process, but. There's a lot of apprehension with that and I think uh, you know, we appreciate your concern. So as things start rolling forward. We'll do our best to make sure all that's transparent.
Well, we should, yeah. But we don't want to just stick our hand out and think they're going to put money in it because we industrialized. And all this with cer- with certain. Certain different technologies and that's one that, yeah, kind of sticks out in my mind as kind of a. A big one right now in the state.
Well, we appreciate that. We appreciate your comments. Uh, any other comments, Commissioners?
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for taking the time to come see us. Still under county resident comments and concerns. Is there anyone else that would like to address governing body? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the county resident comments and concerns and that's going to move us right along into tab B, Commissioners. Under tab B, today is the consent agenda. We've got six items, first being the approval of the September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting minutes. Second is the approval of county vouchers, warrants, E A Ls and the commissioners report. Third is the approval of bonds. Fourth, approval of abates and rebates. Fifth, the approval of the hospital maintenance expenditures. And six being the ratification of the C L G comments on the B L M proposed rule for fluid material leases and leasing process.
Mister Chairman, I would just like to uh make a comment. Since I've been on this commission, every con- every letter that has been submitted on this county's behalf. Has been ratified, whether it was pre-decisional or not pre-decisional, this board has seen it. So I just want to point that out for you. We have a record of commenting on all these federal issues.
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
Um, I'd like to pull B five approval of hospital maintenance expenditures off the consent agenda for discussion.
We do have a request to remove. Tab B five, the approval of the hospital maintenance expenditures from the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Motion by Commissioner Richards, second by Commissioner Slaughter, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Pos nay. So before you is the approval of the consent agenda with all items minus. Item number five, is there any other comments or requests?
Mister Chairman. Commissioner Richards. I've moved the consent agenda minus B five.
Got a motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Richards. Is there a second?
I would second that.
Second by Commissioner Tolman, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Pos nay. Brings us right along to the approval of the hospital maintenance expenditures. Commissioner Richards.
Uh, Mister Chairman, as I, as I look at this expenditure request. Almost every one of these requests is to fund an estimate. I don't remember how in depth our discussions have been with the with the hospital about this, but. My, my memory is that we we reimburse actual expenses. And and at this point, I I think there's. Fifty thousand dollars or so worth of just. Just estimates and proposals in here, and I don't think it's appropriate that we fund those. And then the other item, which I I I don't have a problem with us funding, and that's the property insurance. Um, but I'm not sure that falls under a maintenance expenditure. Um, so I would, I would ask that. We maybe ask the hospital come, come back and and explain these to us. And and separate these out. It's it's one thing to to prove the. An estimate in principle, but I I just don't think we need to be giving, writing them checks based on. Uh, anticipated expenditures versus actual expenditures.
Yeah, and I don't know if some of those. Have been completed. I mean, you would think if they, if they were that they would be invoiced rather than. Proposed. I know there's kind of a mix of both in there, so I don't know. Either of the liaisons have any input on that?
Mister Chairman, I don't recall ever being a part of a conversation where we discussed. This topic, so I don't. I don't know that it's ever been brought up, quite frankly.
Mister Chairman.
Mister Richards.
Um, just, just going through them, train invoice, the 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 train is a quote. Servco quotation. Robert Merrill quote. Win Nelson a quote. Win Nelson a quote. Risa looks like a proposal. And so just going through them, it's quote after quote. I think I saw one or two actual invoices, but it. Uh, almost everything at U S I is an actual invoice, but that's for insurance, which isn't a. I don't believe a maintenance request. It's our, it's our property. I don't have a problem with insuring it, but I don't know that that request belongs under. Uh, maintenance reimbursement. Um, I S I Water Chemistry looks like an actual invoice. So there is some actual invoices in here and I don't have any problem paying those. Um, but I I I'd like, I think I'd like a little more clarification from the hospital.
Mister Chairman.
Mister Jones.
I could uh certainly. Give Irene or Tammy a call and ask for some clarification. I believe the probably how it's always been handled and maybe this is. Or is not correct, but. Aside from insurance, uh, all of these items would. Well, depending on what they are, but essentially come from um maintenance department and building and grounds committee. And I think what has always happened in the past is that these are items that are going to take place. I understand the concern that they haven't. But I think it's just how the process has always worked, that these are the items that are going to be. Taken care of under the maintenance and reimbursed. So I think it's. It's possible cartons before the horse and that's just how it's always been, which doesn't make it right, which is how it's been.
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Tolman.
Well, the quotes are subject to commission approval, so they're not spending the money until they've gotten our approval and that will be the expense. So the quotes are tied to an actual expense. They're not just estimates.
Well, Mister Chairman, if I might, getting an estimate for something doesn't necessarily mean you do it. And we reimburse actual expenditures. I, I just think it's worth having that. Further discussion, so everybody's on the same page. An expenditure is an expenditure. It's it's not an estimate and and we're, we're, we're bound to pay for actual expenditures. I, I don't think it's. The hospital has enough cash carryover, has enough days on hand to to pay their. Pay their bills and then come to us for reimbursement, just like we expect others to do. We, we expect all our other capital. Um, our other component agencies to expend money before voucher-ing us. Um, or or at least have the services performed before voucher-ing us. I don't think the hospital should be any different. And if we have a different agreement with the hospital. That's great, but I have not, I have not seen that and and maybe it's time we address it.
Mister Chairman.
Mister Slaughter.
Um, I I believe it has been the policy of this board to pay the actual expenditures uh in my time as liaison to the hospital. Um, I I believe that that was the understanding. Uh, I I believe that that would be the understanding. That the hospital members have had. Now, I may be mistaken with respect to that. Um, but I do believe that Commissioner Richards is correct, that we should be paying only. Those expenditures which have already previously been ma- been made. On another subject that relates to this, during my time as the liaison. Um, the C E O and C F O of the hospital brought up the potential of possibly looking at. The, a manner in which they could combine fiscal years. Revenues from the maintenance fund to fund larger projects. Um, I explained to them that currently that we could not do that. We couldn't move the money from one year to another and compound that. But I did suggest that they come before the the Board of County Commissioners with that concept and see if there is a a mechanism with which we may. Be able to look at that potential for them. So I think that that's something that we could ask them to come and discuss with us. And and bring forth, um, they they can bring forth their idea of potentially, um. I I guess. pooling the money from one fiscal year in another to fund more, more uh. A extremely high maintenance items rather than just doing it as they're currently doing it.
Mister Chairman. Commissioner Richards.
Let's move the table B five uh until the next meeting, uh pending clarification from the the hospital. Uh, what these expenses are.
Do you have a motion to table the approval of the hospital maintenance expenditures for further clarification? At our next meeting by Commissioner Richards, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter. Any further discussion?
Mister Chairman.
Mister Jones.
Would the commission prefer that I meet with Irene and Tammy over this or actually have them come here and and then explain it? I would be more than happy to do either one.
Mister Chairman, I'm, I'm more than happy either way as long as I have that clarification by the time it comes to us for the next meeting and it. And I'd really prefer to see an expenditure report with actual expenditures. And then something like the insurance broken out separately from from maintenance.
Sounds like whatever is more convenient for you, Commissioner.
I'll, I'll meet with them and if we feel there's a need, they can come in front of us, otherwise I can just report back.
Okay. Do you have a motion and second on the table? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pos nay. Motion is unanimous. And that is going to move us right along into the commissioner comments portion of the agenda. First this morning is Commissioner Richards.
Morning, Mister Chairman, fellow Commissioners. First off, I'd like to take a moment to note the passing of a retired county employee this weekend. Garland McMartin passed a few days ago and I want to offer my condolences to Anne and the rest of his family. Garland, thank you for your years of service to Sweetwater County and Godspeed, my friend. Uh, as this board's liaison to the Sweetwater County Library System, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize this week as banned books week. Our public libraries should always be a safe harbor for our First Amendment rights and any and all censorship attempted by the government. Any government should be swiftly and sadly rebuked. Here next to me are about a dozen of the most important pieces of historical literature that have been banned in the past. Even now, some of them are being threatened with various levels of censorship because of the language they use, the topics they take, they tackle. And the messages they convey. It's a reminder that the purpose of the Bill of Rights is not to limit the people, but to limit the government's intrusion. Into the rights of the people and that the freedom of speech and the freedom of the press are keystones of those inherent rights. So I would encourage everyone to read a banned book this week because the world just wouldn't be the same without Huckleberry Finn, Brave New World or Fahrenheit four fifty-one. Uh, my last couple of weeks have been busy during the week after our last meeting on the nineteenth. Both the C F A C and 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 the Skork State Park Committee canceled their meetings. But I did attend the Inside Connections Annual Fundraising Banquet on the twenty-first. There was a large turnout and I think they were able to raise quite a bit of money for pregnancy care in Sweetwater County. They provide an important service and I think it's great that there's such a resource for young women in our community. On the twenty-fifth, I attended the Combined Communications Board Meeting, followed by a special meeting of the Rock Springs City Council. Where they received a presentation from B L M's Rock Springs Field Manager Kimberly Foster. And also entertained some public comment on the plan. Once again, Ms. Foster claimed that there is misinformation circulating and. Circulating concerning the Rock Springs Resource Management Plan. I keep, I keep hearing that misinformation. Interestingly enough, that is a claim that I've seen parroted in social media lately in comments regarding our own discussions about the subject with some specific comments claiming that. Sweetwater County Commissioners are spreading misinformation about the plan. I'm, I'm confused as to how asking questions. Is spreading misinformation. Uh, I want to be very clear here. If there is any misinformation out there, I believe it's coming directly from the B L M and its representatives. About what's contained in the plan. At the council meeting, Commissioner Jones and I presented excerpts directly from the plan, as did members of the legislature. When I asked Ms. Foster whether my interpretation of the alternative B right-of-way exclusion map was accurate, I was met with silence. We've also been accused of not reading the plan and I can say definitively that as of yet I have not read all thirteen hundred pages. Uh, but what I have read, to put it bluntly, scares the crap out of me. And I look forward to discussing it more with you guys later today. On the twenty-sixth, I spent all day in Casper together with a couple of you, as well as a few of our countywide elected officials, taking the Department of Audit's. Public Officer Training and I can confidently report that I am now a Department of Audit Certified Public Officer. At least until the legislature provides us with another similar gift in the future, Senator Cole. Kidding aside, there was some good information in the class and it was only a little less painful than I expected. On the twenty-seventh, I spent all day in Riverton attending the State Shooting Sports Complex Oversight Task Force Meeting. Where they received the results of the survey that they had previously sent out. I'm happy to say that about one out of every six respondents to the survey came from Sweetwater County. So I want to thank everyone who took the time to respond to it. Results were interesting. The task force will use them to help guide their efforts as they move forward. Determining what criteria they'll be looking at, you know, in determining a site. Uh, that's, that's where this whole process kind of takes a troublesome turn, at least in my mind, leading me to be a little bit discouraged. Some of the early criteria they've established includes obvious things such as access to utilities, electricity, water, sewer, et cetera. And that'd be readily readily accessible to amenities such as shopping, dining, lodging. Um, where it gets complicated though is that they have set a minimum of eight hundred acres. Um, to be available with a preference of around twenty-five hundred acres. Uh, and they'd like to see diverse topographical relief, which I I don't think diverse topographical relief is a problem in Sweetwater County. Uh, but another requirement is that at least one side of the complex is at least a mile and a half long. Um, and they stated very clearly. A, a bias against using any federal land for the complex, basically making it pretty clear that any proposals that include federal land. To meet their requirements will likely not be successful. Um, and that's the rub. I know you've all seen maps of Sweetwater County. We've been looking at them extensively since the uh R M P came out. As you all know, we have what's known as the checkerboard here. Um, something that the R M P has made us painfully aware of. Every other square mile section anywhere near all the amenities. Um, that they require is federal land and the sections that are private. Anywhere near infrastructure and amenities are all pretty much a maximum of one mile to a side. There are very, very limited options in Sweetwater County that could possibly meet the criteria they're setting. Does that mean we're completely out of the running? Absolutely not. I think every community will face much the same challenges. Uh, meeting the criteria they've come up with. Uh, going forward, the task force is planning on releasing a request for proposals, I think by the end of November, they said. And they will give communities ninety days to respond to it. What they'll be looking for at that time, um, is what some of them called a pre-proposal. They're, they're going to want communities to give them an idea of what they can provide, available land, available infrastructure. Available amenities, available services as well as a lot of specific information about any. Available amenities, available services as well as a lot of specific information about any proposed location such as weather studies, wind surveys. Flood plane plans, et cetera. The Recreation Facilities Committee will take a good hard look at the RFP when it comes out and decide if making a proposal makes sense for Sweetwater County and and then we'll be back. Back here to consult with 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 you about it. Moving on, I'm looking forward to South the Southwest Wyoming Growth and Expansion Panel this Thursday. That will be here in this room at six thirty PM and it'll be a great opportunity for residents to get an introduction. To several of the industrial development projects that have been announced for Sweetwater County. I encourage the community to attend that. Next week on the eleventh, I'll attend a Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, followed by the monthly WCCA update. And that's really all the business I have scheduled for the next couple of weeks since one, it's hunting season and two, I have a short family vacation scheduled next week. Go down to Southern Utah to watch the annual eclipse. So that's all I have for you today, Mister Chairman, and I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. I'd like to echo your comments on Garland McMartin. Sad deal having heard that yesterday, uh, very good man. Shooting Sports Complex, it's kind of unique. I watched a portion of that. I thought you did a great job testifying before them. The morning session seemed more of a kind of up in the air. You tell us and we've designed it for. You to create the proposal and then the afternoon ended up with no federal land. So that's uh, going to be a tough task for Sweetwater, but. Appreciate your work on that and traveling around to uh. Fight for the potential of having that here. Uh, any other questions or comments for Commissioner Richards? If not, Commissioner Jones, you're up next.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. In the spirit of time-saving time, I'll give a brief overview of the past two weeks. I'm going to spend most of my time talking about the RMP as well. Uh, I attended about a dozen different meetings uh, for my different responsibilities as Commissioner. Did include the be include the BLM meeting at the Holiday Inn. There were potentially about a thousand people there, uh, seven hundred reportedly signed in and. Estimated twenty to thirty percent wouldn't give any information. So there's probably in the neighborhood of a thousand people. I would like to mention though, the hospital received. Virtually clean financial audit with only one minor adjustment uh, needed to be addressed. Excuse me, I've had dozens of phone calls, emails, texts, conversations, and I have no idea how many hours I've spent reading the RMP. Um, I'd I'd like to speak to the document and the process, not the people involved who work locally for the BLM. Read many pages, uh, by far am not an expert, but I do know a whole lot more than I did in the past. Uh, this is arguably the most important topic Sweetwater County has faced or will face. Uh, this draft proposal will destroy the economy in Sweetwater County, according to the document itself, it will. The first concern is the BLM has had twelve or so years to work on this and put it together. The public has ninety days to read and understand roughly fourteen hundred pages. Which is also a fallacy because the BLM meeting was last week where people were supposed to show up and gain information. So they don't have ninety days. To understand and comment. There were also uh, comment forms for them to fill out on the day that they received the information. Or could ask questions. Uh, so the expectation from the BLM that the public can read and understand fourteen hundred pages in a very short amount of time. Uh, is completely unrealistic expectation. The BLM then expects the public to give written comments that detail issues in the document. The quality of the comments are completely subjective on the part of the BLM. Whether or not they think you enter a substantive comment. Is up to them. So if a member of the public sends in a comment, it isn't substantive enough. Will be disregarded by the BLM, at least that's my understanding. And then the person has uh, their comment thrown up. The process really doesn't lend itself to all public comments. However, it does appear that people from all over the world who never have been here. And will never be here can also comment on the RMP. Senator Stacy Jones and Senator uh, John Colb are planning to have a meeting for the public. Uh, date is not set yet, but. Planning to have a meeting that will help people uh, in sending in the quality comments that the BLM is requesting. I've offered to help them if they uh, need a hand, but uh, so stay tuned for the location, date and time of the meeting. The RMP will eliminate our valuable uh, industries and obviously in turn our jobs. The document states that. That's not my analysis or my opinion. Uh, the document actually speaks to the elimination and reduction of jobs and industries in chapter four of volume one. Under several areas such as socioeconomics. There are other places that that's listed. The reduction of industries and jobs is likely understated as the right-of-way map will eliminate the future transmission transmission of new energy. Whether it be wind, solar, oil, natural gas, coal, pretty much everything. Document has been mentioned is roughly fourteen hundred pages, thirteen hundred, depending on who you talk to. It's a lot. Uh, it's overwhelming. Um, I have researched as much as I can to this point and have a variety of bullet points. That I think are pertinent to Sweetwater County and the residents of Sweetwater County. Uh, I go off of the specific wording from the document. I don't add lib and I don't pretend to know everything. So I will not make anything up. I read exactly from the document. The bullet points that uh, that I have, that I've either written or um, have highlighted. Are the specific wording from BLM comparing alternative A to alternative B for minerals and oil and gas. Uh, also have bullet points uh, using the BLM's wording in the RMP for off-road. Or off-highway vehicle area designation, special designations, management areas. It's also uh, discussions about snowmobile and over snow vehicle travel, which refers to a need for a minimum eight inches of snow cover. That is not following any science documented anywhere that I can find. It does not describe the type of snow, whether it's compacted, whether it's fresh. It's just a random eight inch depth. The snowmobile community has been fighting depth requirements for a number of years because there is no science backing it. Uh, there's also language in there that uh, impacts recreation as far as uh, prohibiting clubs and organizations from holding OHV. Endurance race, challenge, course, events, such things as poker runs, fun runs, that type of thing. Uh, so local fundraising also takes a hit. Um, as I mentioned before, I've repeatedly asked to see their map of roads and have received nothing in return. I know the oil and gas, trona, coal, et cetera, have their experts combing through the documents so they understand how it affects them. They're commenting, so I'll leave it to their experts. Uh, for how it specifically uh, impacts them, but the document is very flawed and lacking in a tremendous amount of detail. That could set the county up for far more loss in both recreation and jobs than is described in the RMP as it's written. We'll say obviously tensions are running high and understandably so as this document has the ability to destroy Sweetwater County as we know it. And destroy our jobs and recreation. I was at the meeting last week with BLM represented, mentioned there would be a briefing on the possibility of the extension of the comment period that. Uh, I was asked uh, when the meeting would take place and the response was, I don't know why you think you should have that information. Think it's a very important piece of information to have. Obviously, there's a timeline here. We all have a certain amount of time to read. Understand and comment on the document. So I was taken back by that response. But I think it just shows how high the tensions are. I do ask everyone, keep any and all comments directed towards the document and the process. This is now the second time in my report that I've said that. Uh, don't direct your your comments uh, at the folks in the office locally. Make it personal. That's not going to get us anywhere. Uh, last thing I have is uh, that I'm was asked to testify in front of the Travel Recreation. Uh, Committee tomorrow and will do so speaking as a commissioner, but not for the commission if there are no concerns from all of you. And also Mister Bingham has been asked uh, if he would testify as well if the commission is all right with that. And in light of Senator Colb's comments earlier today, I may consider testifying Friday as well. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate your work on that. Uh, no issues here in regards to any testification. Comments, questions?
Commissioner Jones for his his work on this and I have, I had no hesitation about uh, uh, about seeing him testify. As a commissioner or even on behalf of this commission.
All right. Any other comments? Looks like I'm up next. Uh, I've been busy a couple of weeks for all of us since we last met. On the twenty-seventh, I had a stacked agenda full of meetings, starting with Board of Health, first thing in the morning. Not a whole lot to report there. The city of Green River and Rock Springs have both approved their budget requests. So statutorily speaking, all government agencies are in line regarding funding this year. Now, which is kind of a first run, as you might recall. Um, the question moving forward is more on how to define. What those, you know, funding breakdowns look like because it's not specific in the statute. So we'll continue to uh, work on that. But I guess for this year, we can check the compliance box in the meantime, which is good progress for all. Um, we're kind of beating this one up, but I think we're going to for uh, quite a while. I I did too also attend the local BLM. Uh, I'll call it the open house, not necessarily a public meeting. It was a great turnout, but not exactly what some of the public was hoping for, I don't believe. Process has certainly been interesting, uh, certainly frustrating and educational in many aspects. I think. Everyone coming out and stomping their feet has been a good first response and I'm proud to witness the amount of concern from the public. I think it shows. You know. Public engagement is an important piece of this process that should be considered by certainly the uh, officials of the BLM. It seems moving forward, more of a proper approach will be to double down and start focusing on the more substantive process and and identifying errors made within the BLM's procedural processes. And focusing on the lack of cooperator involvement. I think we can all agree for the most part that we don't like the preferred alternative. But the fighting hope lies within the mistakes made within the sudden release of this plan and we'll continue to dissect that in the details. In order to respond strategically and factually. I trust our team will continue, will continue doing just that to protect what's best for all of us in Sweetwater County. We're already hearing reports, as you heard from Commissioner Richards this morning, uh. In regards to residents receiving fines for traveling on two-track roads since all of this news was suddenly released. Uh, seems a bit coincidental. Uh, one of those was on the backside of Aspen Mountain and another was out in the Sand Dunes area. Uh, being fined for traveling on two trackers that contain vegetation growth was the reason for the fine. Which seems to be a little bit of foreshadowing. I don't know of too many two-track roads that don't have vegetation in the middle of them, so. The fight is among us and we're going to continue to push back, but something to be aware of with them. Happy to report uh, later that evening on the twenty-seventh, I had. Monthly Southwest Counseling Mental Health Board Meeting and they have finally approved and signed the agreement with us for fiscal year twenty-four. Uh, utilized the assistance of John DeLeon and Gary McLean to help um, push through some of the. Background on a community service board and I just want to a- applaud them for their efforts. Um, lots of work went into bearing kind of a PowerPoint presentation on. Identifying certain aspects with that agreement and how it relates to state statute and. John wasn't able to be there because he was up in in Waco with some of you, but Gary did come and. Present on behalf of all of us and also went into kind of the history of their um, health insurance plan. As you might men- or might recall, I mentioned in our last meeting that they were looking into some different options, so. Job well done. I appreciate their assistance. I got good feedback from their board, um, which is exactly what they were looking forward to, so. That's good news moving forward for Southwest Counseling. They are also in the works on getting their building back up in working order. As far as that um, backflow preventer that failed, uh, they're looking probably a month or so out, so. Uh, I met with Mayor Mickelson last week. I had a proposal brought to my attention in regards to an indoor turf field. Um, many of us are aware, we've been reached out to in regards to an indoor multi-use facility. This was more of. Kind of a smaller scale, trying to convert like a gymnasium into a turf field that could be used for soccer and other events. Didn't really get anywhere. As you know, everything is all about funding and lack of courts and and. There, I learned from that that apparently a lot of these, you know, youth sports aren't utilizing the school district facilities. Due to varying issues there, so a lot of their practices and things of that nature are taking place at the rec or civic centers and as such. They don't necessarily have uh, room to forego a court to turn into turf, but. It's an interesting conversation and uh, between the two of us, we'll try and see if we can make that a. Some form of fruition in the future with maybe some of these vacant buildings we have, but you know, that goes. Um, Mayor and Commissioner meeting tomorrow at lunch, so I look forward to attending that. I will have the inpatient behavioral health services meeting with community stakeholders and Memorial Hospital on Friday. I believe that is at the same time as Senator Colb's. Management meeting. So I probably won't be able to attend that, but it sounds like there's some interest for one of us to be there. And then the RMP coordination meeting with the governor has been set for the twelfth. So once I hear more details on that, I will pass that along. They're unclear if he's coming to town or if it'll be a Zoom option, what time and all of that, but. Lots uh, ahead of us. We've got the Expansion Growth Committee on Thursday and. That's primarily all I've got for you this morning unless you have any questions.
What were you doing all week? What were you doing all week?
Mister Slaughter, you're up next.
Mister Chairman, thank you. Uh, on the twenty-first, I met with Allison Valsick. Uh, Ms. Valsick was previously the administrative assistant on our last specific purpose tax joint powers board. Uh, so I met with her to engage her potentially as our administrative assistant for this specific purpose tax joint powers board. Um, she has accepted that position. Um, excited to have that. I think it's going to bring uh, a lot of knowledge. And some continuity to that board. Uh, on the twenty-fifth, I spent the morning at my office in the courthouse reviewing the Rock Springs RMP. Uh, unfortunately, I have not had nearly as much time as I would like to review that document. I've probably gotten through a hundred pages of it. Uh, with a cursory view, I've been spending a lot of my time over the last two weeks trying to get um, everything in place. For the sale of our bonds for the specific purpose tax and I'll talk about that later. Later that day, I traveled to Casper to prepare for the mandatory public officer training, which was held on Tuesday, September twenty-sixth. And for the Wyoming Association of County Officials Meeting, which is to be held on Wednesday and Thursday. On the twenty-sixth, I participated in the public officer training exercise that was required for continuing service for public officials. And as Commissioner Richards, I am now a fully authorized public officer. The training was very rudimentary, I felt, and I would believe targeted for people serving in public capacities that had not had prior training. I believe it would be more suited for people who are uh, appointed or elected to boards that have not had that training in the past. But there were several items that I found deserving of discussion and there were also many that were less necessary. Overall, I'm glad to have this behind me. On the twenty-seventh, I attended the twenty-twenty-three, what Wyoming Association of County Officers Conference. The Wyoming Association of Conf- uh, uh, excuse me, the Wyoming Association. All right, whatever the heck. I'm sorry, it's officers. Um, the agenda consisted of routine addresses. And concluded with remarks on the last legislative session by Speaker of the House Albert Summers and President of the Senate Ogden Driscoll. Major topics of interest were property tax relief, which they believe is a huge statewide priority coming up and election reform. As I expected, the discussion then turned to the BLM's release of the Rock Springs RMP. I was able to have an excellent conversation with Senator Driscoll after his remarks. The rest of the morning was spent in a panel discussion on engaging the Wyoming Legislature. It was very informative. The afternoon was spent engaging with other commissioners, legislators and state officials on the Rock Springs RMP. We also heard from Senators Lamas, Brasso and Congresswoman Hagman. On the twenty-eighth, the morning was highlighted by talks by Governor Gordon and our four other state elected officials. The afternoon was spent providing and obtaining more information on the Rock Springs RMP. We were able to obtain the support of the Wyoming County Commissioners Association and in my estimation, virtually all of the counties. On the second, I spent the day in my office catching up on all that I missed last week and conducted the specific. Purpose Tax Joint Powers Board Meeting late in the afternoon. Uh, pleased to report that after all that has gone on with it, um, things are moving along nicely. Moody's has actually issued their public release for the rating of the bonds. It is proprietary at this time, so we cannot talk about it, but I can say, uh, I believe we received an excellent rating. uh, I believe we received an excellent rating. It was better than what our previous rating was on our last bond issue. So I I appreciate all the work that was done in in getting the information to Moody's to get that bond rating done, and all that was done by Stiefel in helping uh along with all of those others who worked with me to try and get that done. Stiefel is planning on selling the bonds on October eighteenth. It's been a long and arduous process, but I think we're finally in the backstretch on it. Tomorrow morning, we will be hosting our federal partners meeting in the Castle Rock Room. Should be interesting. Uh, we will be doing it also by Zoom, and we will be serving donuts and coffee. Hopefully, it will be well attended. I also, as well as all of you, received our Public Works Report from Gene Legursky. Uh, I would like to read it into the record if I could, um, from Mr. Legursky on buildings. The LED lighting project is almost complete. We have had some bad four LEDs to change in a couple of buildings and some minor cleanup work to be done in the detention center. When we looked at the power bills at the purchasing building from August twenty twenty-two and compared them with August of twenty-three, we saw a net decrease of fourteen hundred eighty kilowatt hours. Twenty twenty-two was three degrees warmer in August than it was this year, so it isn't a complete apples-to-apples comparison, but I like the trend. We will keep watching the Rocky Mountain Power Bills and will report back around the first of the year to see how the payback is progressing. We should have enough data by then on all of the LED upgraded buildings to see a trend. The switchgear at Roosevelt School, the Golden Hour Senior Center, is being replaced today. We ordered parts back in May, so it has been a long haul to replace the damaged parts in the switchgear. Our Roden Bridge Department, we finally scheduled delivery date of the nine-foot diameter Colbert that we will be replacing in Marsh Creek where it crosses County Road thirty-three. If all of the parts showed up, we will replace the Colbert during the first week of November. We're still waiting on a couple of permit clearances, but this long-awaited fix for this area should be completed this year. The Colbert that was damaged during the flooding in Bear Oil on County Road twenty-two will be fixed later this month. Through some field investigation, we found out that we might be able to just replace the damaged twenty-foot section and add a flare-to-end section with riprap. This will be an easier fix than replacing the complete Colbert length of one hundred feet. Since the original eighty feet of Colbert is in good shape with no signs of rust or damage, this is the preferred alternative. The Lagoon Road Project, County Road one twelve, is ninety-nine percent complete. We'll be doing a walkthrough late next week on that project. This is from our engineering department and should open the road to the public later on this month, once the last concrete pours, twenty-eighth-day strength tests are finalized. County Road one McKinnon Road Study Geotechnical Inva- Investigation was completed during the first week of September. We are waiting on the final geotechnical report. Really don't need that to pop up in front of me while I'm reading here. Uh, we were waiting for the final geotechnical report, which should be turned over to Sweetwater County any day. The consultant will then take this information and start working on the final report. We're hoping to see a fifty percent draft report by the end of October with a final report still scheduled for late November or early December. And finally, parks and rec, after a busy short-staffed summer, things are starting to wind down. The department has started to get things ready for winter, fertilizing all of the parks, blowing out sprinkler systems, trimming damaged trees, and doing the final cleanup of leaves and other summer debris. With that, Mr. Chairman, I close my comments and would stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. A nine-foot colbert, that's moving some serious water. It's uh pretty impressive. On your specific purpose tags, did Green River ever decide what they would like to do relative to bonding?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, on Thursday of last week, I received a call from um the Green River CFO Chris Meats stating that they had determined that they were not going to bond. Um, the comments that were made were that they they did believe that there could potentially have been some benefits for them in bonding, but because the way the process had worked and because we were at the level we are, or at the stage we were at, and it would delay things further, that they they believed it was in everyone's best interest if they did not bond at that time. So we have moved forward with that. Um, and as I say, uh, because uh, they have chosen not to do that, we were able to go ahead and move forward with the ratings as it was done with Moody's. Um, Stiefel is still on track for what they had originally planned, and it really didn't provide much of a setback for them to have asked to potentially look at the bonding at our last meeting.
You're good. Appreciate your work on that. I know that's been a lot of uh well, a lot of information to dissect and sort through, and he was being chaired of that and certainly had a mouthful, so appreciate your work on that on top of everything else. Any comments or questions for Commissioner Slaughter? Thanks, Commissioner. Looks like Commissioner Toman, you're bringing up the rear.
The best for last, I'm sure. I also attended the Wyoming Association of County Officials in Casper, September twenty fifth to twenty ninth. I'm also a certified public officer, having completed the training. Um, the rule is know and follow all statutes related to your position, so that's the message for all the special districts and boards out there, so that's why you need to know the train, have the training. Uh, I'll skip over some of this because Commissioner Slaughter was also in attendance at those meetings. Um, Rock Springs, Bureau of Land Management Resource Management Plan was a big topic of discussion uh throughout the conference with the other counties and with our Wyoming County Commissioner Association. I presented a summary of the cooperator process at the Water, State, and Public Lands Energy and Environment Committee, and we are scheduled to meet with the governor on October twelfth. Attended the Transportation and Veteran Affairs Committee. Uh, we heard about a YDOT study of all county roads on the west half of the state for two twenty two thousand fifteen. Uh, they've done a study of all the county paved roads, over two thousand miles of them. Uh, we received an update from the new YDOT Director Darren Westby. Uh, we need to fill, he needs to fill three hundred vacancies. He discussed funding and infrastructure needs. There uh, there's their state transportation plan improvement plan is out. It's a six-year plan. They had to cut six seventy million from the budget this year. So your favorite road may not get repaired. They also discussed state rules for lights on snowplows. It was interesting. Counties not come uh forced to comply. Fuel tax is twenty percent of their budget. We had an update from the Wyoming uh Department of Health, some interesting statistics. Uh, if any of you want to see them, Public Health Division Community Prevention Unit. Wyoming young adults were surveyed. Nine out of ten drank alcohol, two-thirds used tobacco or nicotine, just under half reported using marijuana. We talked about mental health, suicide prevention, and uh oh, a lot of um other topics related to youth in that special survey that was conducted. Well, they did a downtown tour. We saw some million-dollar condos, very interesting, being built by the True Family. Uh, we heard about the McMurray Foundation, the sports complex with ten courts for youth practices. It's a fifty-million-dollar project. And they are only twenty percent funded by the McMurrys, so they're uh seeking private funding to complete that complex. Upcoming, our federal partners meeting tomorrow at nine AM is pre-decisional. Uh, Senator Colb, you could attend though as a government agency. If you want to hear updates from the BLM and the Forest Service, they will be in the Castle Rock Room at nine AM. Uh, enterprise meeting on October fifth, seven AM with the Chamber of Commerce, the Manufacturing Fair at the Western Wyoming College, ten to four on the fifth. Conservation District, four PM at uh Golden Hour. Economic Development, the panel discussion at fi- uh, six thirty to eight PM. And the high school is having a choir concert at seven PM. As a new member of the BLM Resource Advisory Council, that should be interesting to see how much advice they want from us. Our first meeting will be October eighteenth and nineteenth in Rollins. And our next coalition meeting will be October nineteenth, and our lawyer is working to get comments back to us soon so that we can share them with the public before we have to submit them on November sixteenth. Does not seem to be much hope for getting any kind of an extension, even though the governor and God and everyone has requested more time. I, it doesn't sound like we will get it. So that concludes my comments.
That might be your shortest report yet.
Thank you. Well, Commissioner Slaughter, you stole my thunder.
Yeah, he does that. Any questions or comments for Commissioner Toman?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
Commissioner Toman, you you mentioned the sports complex in the Trum County. Um, twenty percent funded by the McMurray Foundation, but they're looking for private funding for.
Yes, yeah, they want all private funding, so they're seeking. I asked them, what about doing a satellite in Rock Springs? And she said, perfect idea. Go find the money.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think that begs a comment. We keep hearing, and in your report, we keep hearing that the people want something like this. But the communities that are getting these things, they're getting them because of private funding. I I would encourage people to stop coming to their elected officials and say and saying, spend our tax money on these these amenities and start going to the industries in our community who were who were literally making billions of dollars on our resources and say, we need you guys to be funding these things. It's time to looking those foundations to be investing in 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 these long-term long-term projects in our community, because I would love to have something like that. But clearly, Sweetwater County doesn't have the resources to build something like that out of tax money.
It has ten uh courts. But they're for practice only. There are no spectator seating uh or anything like that, but it is next to one that has two courts that is a public facility. Where they can have uh tournaments and those types of things. So I've got more information I can share with you. If anyone's interested in starting something like that, I do have the information from them and that McMurray Foundation, the daughter presented what they have to the commissioners. Fifty million dollars, fifty million dollars for ten courts.
It was brought to me. It was kind of interesting. It was similar. It was just more practice, not really spectator-based, but the unique aspect was there was no funding request. They were going to raise the funds on them themselves by doing what Commissioner Richards just alluded to as more of trying to secure a location for it. Because obviously, building out the facility is the biggest expense, and the idea of, you know, having a direct center in the civic centers that perhaps we could utilize staff that's already there, but I agree with you. I mean, I, there's the needs there, the wants are there, but it's like always a matter of funding, and you see why aren't you doing what Casper's doing, or why aren't you doing what Gillette's doing? Well, a little bit different story, so. Any other comments for Commissioner Toman? If not, nice work, Commissioners. Busy couple of weeks with more ahead, and uh we'll continue to work hard. It looks like, because Mary's report was so long, we're a little bit behind schedule here.
Thank you.
That's going to put us uh moving right along into Tab C on the agenda. We do have the action and presentation items. First up is the appointment to the Sweetwater County Triparite, Triparite Board. We've got Christina Marshall, County Grants Manager, with us this morning, and welcome back.
Okay, good morning again. This is my last agenda item. So the Sweetwater County Triparite Board is a public advisory board that carries out what we call quote-unquote "community action" or partnership initiatives to reduce poverty. The membership or the members participate in the development, planning, implementation, and evaluation of programs to serve low-income people, including the elderly and children in our local community. So the Triparite Board makes recommendations for the Community Services Block Grant Application that is awarded to and managed by Sweetwater County Government. Pursuant to the Community Services Block Grant Act, the Triparite Board composition consists of, no surprise, three parts. So the first part is one-third elected officials, in which we have a member from the Rock Springs City Council, Green River City Council, and the County Commissioner. The next third are representatives of low-income individuals. And then finally, one-third are members of the community at large for a total board composition of nine members. So at present, there is a vacancy for a representative of the low-income sector who must be selected through a democratic process. That means election process and does not need to be low-income themselves. This requirement is satisfied by having elected county commissioners make that appointment. And just a fun fact, years ago, I used to hold an election at the food bank um and low-income people would vote for their representative, but that is actually no longer feasible, so. Um, so I did advertise for this board vacancy, and one application was submitted for consideration. Now, a few notes. You may recall back in January, the Commission approved having Roy Lloyd, who was a previous county commissioner, whose term ended, uh, is he was actually the county commissioner representative and was allowed to extend his full, to fulfill his term that ended on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Back in January, uh, Commissioner Slaughter was um expected to carry the term for on behalf of the county commission beginning October one. I'm not sure if you would like to revisit that. Maybe Commissioner Slaughter does. And then in your packet, I also have information about the Triparite Board. I have the confidential application from Roy Lloyd, the advertisement, and also the board bylaws for your information. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Christina. Any questions, Commissioners? Still feel like servant on that one? Taylor's a newbie. We can dump it on him.
Mr. Chairman, I would be glad to continue, um, or to actually, I guess, begin. I am, I have attended those meetings, but to actually begin as the commission representative on the Triparite Board.
I don't remember if we made that motion back then. I think, I know, I remember discussing it, but.
I think we did, Mr. Chairman, because I think I, it was anticipated that I would actually just take that seat. But then due to the the confusion, um, we actually found out that it was uh it was, it had a term that was going to expire in September, and we would then made the adjustment and agreed at that point in time that that was how we would handle it.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Roy Lloyd to the Sweetwater County Triparite Board as representative of the low-income population effective October first, two thousand twenty-three.
It's all moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a sec?
I would second that.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion's unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up, under Tab C is item two. We've got Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation this morning. With us is the YWCA Center for Families and Children Director Chelsea Cortez, Shayla Swenson, and I believe Board Member Lindsay Travis has rejoined us. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning. Um, my name is Chelsea Cortez. I am the YWCA Center for Families and Children's Director. This morning, I have our Board President Lindsay Travis up here, and I have our Shelter Manager Shayla Swenson, who will be presenting.
Morning.
Morning.
Um, the National Network of, to end domestic violence, conducted a twenty-four-hour survey each year. In two thousand twenty-two, U.S. domestic violence programs served seventy-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-five victims in one day. High-profile cases will attract the headlines, but thousands of people experience domestic violence each day. More often than not, domestic violence happens behind closed doors and may not be visible to the public or even close family members and friends. However, YWCA serves hundreds of victims each year in Sweetwater County. In two thousand twenty-two, the YWCA Center for Families and Children assisted over four hundred clients throughout Sweetwater County. Additionally, the YWCA provided two thousand shelter nights and assistance with a hundred and ninety-four protection, a hundred and ninety-five protection orders. Each year, we return to you to request the month of October be proclaimed Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We desire for the community to know that domestic violence does happen in our community. More importantly, we want to reach out to those who may be experiencing domestic violence and let them know that our services are available. It's important for survivors to know that abuse is not their fault. They are not alone. We have advocates are available twenty-four seven. We invite you to join us for our five K Purple Glow Run on October fourteenth to help spread awareness for domestic violence. The Glow Run will be at the Youngard Heart Senior Center and will start at five thirty. We will have silhouettes set up outside the Youngard Heart Sen- um, Senior Center honoring those who have lost their lives due to domestic violence here in Sweetwater County. Thank you for your time and your continued support.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We appreciate it. With that, twenty-four systems, where do they go? Is it online? Is there a phone number? Where do people access you guys?
So you, we have a crisis line number. Um, I can announce it is three oh, three five zero ten. So you, we have a crisis line number. I can announce it is three, three, five, zero, ten, thirty. Twenty-four seven. We have advocates available.
Very good. Well, we appreciate all you do and. Already seen signs out there throughout the community, so we appreciate the awareness. We do have a proclamation to read. So we will move forward with that. And what it says is whereas the YWCA of Sweetwater County recognizes and participates in a public awareness campaign. To support National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence. And to show support for the organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services and assistance to victims. And on average, nearly twenty people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States. During one year, this equates to more than ten million women and men. And domestic violence can take a form of physical, emotional, sexual and economic abuse. One in three women and one in four men in the United States have experienced some form of physical violence by an intimate partner. And too often, the victims of domestic violence are children who can have lifelong repercussions. From the emotional or physical trauma of being exposed to domestic violence. And domestic violence survivors and their advocates in Sweetwater County have rallied. To the cause of victim justice and the government and citizens of Sweetwater County fully recognize the need to treat victims with dignity and compassion. Now, therefore, we, the Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of October two thousand twenty-three. To be Domestic Violence Awareness Month and call upon our citizens to stand together against domestic violence. Offer support and understanding to survivors and participate in domestic violence awareness activities. In an effort to raise awareness for this important issue, there will be purple lights and silent win. Silent witness silhouettes around the communities and in local businesses throughout the month of October. And I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mister Chairman, I would make the motion to approve the proclamation.
Motion by Commissioner Toman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous. Thank you, ladies. We appreciate you coming over and sitting through. I'm sure that was enlightening to. Hear all of our political work, but we do, do we have the proclamation printed? You want a picture?
I would love a picture.
Awareness, okay. Let's do that. Hopefully you brought a camera. Moves us right along into item three under Tab C, Commissioners. Up next, we've got the ratification of the sheriff and coroner vehicle bid awards. With us this morning is Purchasing Director Marty Dernovich. Morning, Marty.
Morning Commissioners, how are you?
We're hanging in there.
Me too.
He's buying lunch, you know, so you can stall until lunch.
Oh, okay.
He's gonna buy breakfast, but you know how America gets.
Well, Commissioners, as you, as you know, and as you gave approval in the past that. Once we got just due to the supply chain and and getting on. The order dates with with the car dealerships and such, you authorized. Me to be able to award and then bring back to ratify that award on on vehicle bids. So before you, we have four different bids that we need to. Ratify, the first one being bid number twenty-three dash oh five S D. This is a. A sport sized utility vehicle for with the police package on it for the sheriff's department. We received two bids, one from King Garf out of Cheyenne for thirty-six thousand eight hundred and ten. And one from Fremont Motors of Rock Springs. In the amount of forty-two thousand twenty-six dollars. As you can see, going through the specs, the one that King Garf. Submitted did not even come close to meeting our specs. It didn't have the police package on it. With all the lighting wiring, just would not meet the needs of of what we needed, so. We didn't accept that due to the exceptions to the specifications. And we awarded to Fremont Motor of Rock Springs.
Very good. Any questions on the first bid, Commissioners? If not, entertain a motion to ratify and approve bid twenty-three dash zero five S D. For the utility police package to Fremont Motors in the amount of forty-two thousand twenty-six dollars. Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay.
The next one is, excuse me, bid number twenty-three dash oh six S D. This is for five. Police packages for the sheriff's department and they are pursuit rated. Again, we received two bids, one from King Garf out of Cheyenne. The amount of unit cost of forty-seven thousand six hundred and eighty-six. The other one from Fremont Motors of Rock Springs. Unit cost of forty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-six for a total of two hundred and seven thousand two hundred and eighty. We awarded to Fremont Motor of Rock Springs.
Questions on this bid, Commissioners?
Nice, we got some locals. Local business.
On that twelve to fifty-two weeks, are they thinking it's gonna be about?
Actually, I've got order confirmations on that, on on these ones. Some of the others, probably not.
Mister Jones, do you have something?
I was gonna ask the same exact question as the strike was. Can it delay any of these?
Supposedly, this factory that that these are coming out of, the Durangos. So far, has not on strike, so. That could change.
Entertain a motion to approve and ratify bid twenty-three dash zero six S D for the five sport utility police package. Twenty twenty-four Dodge Durango's to Fremont Motors Rock Springs in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand two hundred and eighty dollars.
I would make that motion.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Toman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous.
The next bid, excuse me, is twenty-three dash oh seven S D. This is a sport sized utility vehicle to be used. I believe it's for more of the administrative staff for the sheriff's department. Again, we received two bids, King Garf of Cheyenne. Unit cost is forty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars. We got a bid from Fremont Chevrolet out of Riverton. Unit cost of twenty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-two. There was an exception to that bid from Fremont out of Riverton. We bid a V six, they're bidding a V four. One point five liter turbo. After speaking with the sheriff and and the. Officers that'll be using this vehicle, they felt that will meet their needs just based on the cost difference. The other one from King Garf is an actual police patrol vehicle and that they felt was too much. So they accepted those exceptions and we awarded to Fremont Chevrolet out of Riverton.
Questions on this bid, Commissioners? Not an entertain a motion to approve and ratify bid twenty-three dash zero seven S D for two. Two thousand twenty-four Chevy Equinoxes to Fremont Chevrolet Riverton in the amount of fifty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars. Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous.
The last bid before you Commissioners is bid number twenty-three dash oh eight C O. This is a full sized utility vehicle for our coroner's office. We tried to do this last year and we missed the slots of build and so. The coroner's office had to wait again until this year and so we lucked out and actually got three bids. The first one was Fremont Motors of Lander. Unit cost of fifty-seven thousand three hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-two cents. We received a bid from Fremont Chevrolet out of Riverton. Unit cost of sixty-two thousand fifty-two dollars. And one from King Garf out of Cheyenne for fifty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. Unfortunately, we awarded to Fremont Motors out of Lander. The exceptions on both of those vehicles, after talking to the coroner. The vehicle shop maintenance guys that build the floors in the back of these vehicles for the coroner's purposes. The thing that threw out the low bid on that was they bid it with a center console. And they cannot have a center console in there due to their radio equipment. That's where they mount that stuff. It just wouldn't work for their purposes, so we had to go to the next lowest bidder, which was Fremont Motors Lander.
Thanks, Barney. Any questions on this coroner's vehicle, Commissioners? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve and ratify bid twenty-three dash zero eight C O. For the full sized two thousand twenty-four Ford Expedition XL Max to Fremont Motors out of Lander. And the amount of fifty-seven thousand three hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-two cents.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marty. Appreciate you coming over. Next under Tab C this morning is item number four. We've got an Award of Engineering Design and Construction Administration Contract. William H. Smith and Associates Incorporated. With us today is Public Works Director Gene Legursky and good morning, Gene.
Morning, Mister Chairman. Thank you, fellow Commissioners. Just a real kind of background on this, Energy Roads doesn't really mean anything to you guys. The name came up because of some legislation that was passed about three years ago. Senator Cole was actually instrumental in that. There's some funding out there from the state that allows for new energy development, new roads or repair of existing roads for new energy development. So we started looking at our roads, started doing inventory of them and trying to come up with a project and talking with. Randall Luthy and subsequently Robert Krieger and his staff with the Wyoming Energy Authority. There is still some discussion on whether the counties can actually apply for this. But we're gonna go forward with it and. Get the design done, get some stuff done, so we have fifty percent design, so we have really good hard numbers. We can actually then apply for the funding through that. It's a fifty fifty match, but there is also some bill funding out there that the. Federal government has just tweaked a little bit too, that we can use for this, so but we need to get a good handle on exactly what our costs are. And go through with that. If you actually looked at how we did the RFP. We have a stopping point in there where, hey, we'll get to the fifty percent of design plans. And then let's apply for this funding and see where we go. We can actually still pay for this through gas tax. But I want to make sure that we are trying to maximize our gas tax, that we can get a fifty fifty match or. You know, an eighty twenty match or whatever we can from the other stuff, we're gonna do it. And what this is, is if you look at the roads, we picked a little over a mile on the Wamset or Crooks Gap North Road. If you're familiar with that area, there's actually a YDOT parking area past the first cattle guard. Right there before you kind of get into where the BP complex used to be. And then there's a chain up area that is just past the water tower. That road during the boom takes nine hundreds plus semis a day, lot of turning movements, lot of just, and we've tried just about everything we can imagine on that. So we need to get some good geotech up there, find out what's going on with the road and come up with a viable solution. The next section of road is actually the power plant road, County Road Nine. No, sorry, it's not nine. Nine mile road. Anyway, the first mile, one point two miles was given to us from YDOT through a road exchange. That has underground springs, stuff like that. I've overlaid that road twice in sections and it's still. Rides like a roller coaster. It's starting to sink, so we need to get that. That built up and then while we're doing that, we're gonna concentrate on the other ten plus miles of road that goes all the way through the plant. Payment preservation, clearing the right of way, checking culverts, doing fencing projects and stuff like that. So that's kind of all wrapped into two. There are two completely different roads, but it's really one project. We did our normal RFP process that goes by state statute. You know, had committee. We had three qualified firms. And it came down to, you know, all you guys have the. The the tabs in front of you of the scoring sheet. It was really ten points between first through third place. You know, on two hundred, a two hundred plus point scale. So we felt we got three really good proposals. And I recommend that we award the proposal to William H. Smith and Associates. That is what the committee picked as the most qualified proposal out there.
Thanks, Gene. Appreciate the background on that. Any questions on this bid award, Commissioners or RFP award?
Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
Gene, is is that fund that you're talking about, is that the one that Representative Stith has been contacting us regularly?
We have Cliff Stiff and Colm Molepav, yeah, and there's. There's some ambiguity in there and exactly how it can be awarded. The last three awards. We were under the impression, although to be completely honest, we did it, Campbell County actually got one. And in talking to the staff down at the Wyoming Energy Authority, that would, that's not exactly what happened. What happened is North Animal Coal. Applied for the funding on behalf of the county, moved the road and they gave it back to the county. So, you know, when we get in this and we actually do it, we're gonna approach Rocky Mountain Power, we're gonna reproach, you know, Crowheart and whoever's out there to see. Maybe that's a way we can apply for this funding. We just don't know yet. We don't have enough information, partly because we don't know the exact cost.
Any other questions, Commissioners? If not, I would entertain a motion to award the Engineering Design and Construction Administration Contract for the Energy Roads Project in the amount of. Four hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents. William H. Smith and Associates Incorporated and allow the chairman to sign all not, all necessary documentation.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Commissioner Richards. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous.
Thank you.
Gene, thanks, Andy. That brings us to a break. Anyone need a ten minute break or do you wanna finish through with? The RMP discussion.
I'm fine, Mister Chairman, so.
Good, Eric? Okay. We will skip over the break and. Item six, we've got discussion of comments for the draft Rock Springs Resource Management Plan, the RMP. With us this morning is our Land Use Director Eric Bingham, who's been working on this. Day in, day out, night in, night out and probably weekends too, so. Good morning, Eric.
Good morning. Thank you, Mister Chairman. So. I drafted a memo to the Board of County Commissioners. Last week. That's included in your packet. That discusses. The the Resource Management Plan as far as the strategy moving forward with the comments. And then also identifying some areas that we should focus on, as you're aware. I'm a one man show and so. And there's a lot of different areas that's identified in the Resource Management Plan. So. Kind of wanted to discuss that today and then a letter that's been prepared for your consideration, Mister Chairman. So where we're sitting at right now is we sent out a letter. And to ask for an extension, not sure where that's gonna lie, so we definitely need to focus on the November sixteenth. And I brought it up to the field manager and just really have no clear answer on whether that's gonna be extended or not, so. So as far as moving forward. That's what we're, deadline we're gonna have to sit with. I've had some conversations with the county attorney's office. Regarding what's the best way to get substantive comments so that we have standing in the protest period. And potential appeal if if it gets that far. But I wanted to discuss a little bit, and when pulled up on the screen here, let me do that real quick. There we go. So. There is special specific criteria and Commissioner Toman brought up the. The actual protest that was done on the on the Rollins Resource Management Plan. And while we were sitting in the meeting today, Ms. Danielle Ben Court did provide the actual documentation for that, so we have an example. What was used in Rollins during that time. When the Coalition of Local Governments did file a protest. Regarding numerous issues. One thing that's important, this is out of the. Code of Federal Regulations talks about protest procedures that you have to follow. And this is sixteen ten, so it's forty-three sixteen ten point five dash two. Which is out of, which this relates to specifically to the Bureau of Land Management. And I can provide the Commissioners with all this information. Discusses how short the. Discusses how short the protest period is, that it is a thirty day process after the publication of the Resource Management Plan. So you don't have a lot of time. But one thing that's in that first paragraph under A, a protest may raise only those issues which were submitted for the record during the planning process. So as a cooperator, we've written many letters, so has the Coalition of Local Governments in all those years since two thousand twelve. So any of those issues that can be raised up during the protest period. And in addition, any, so when the public is actually during this public comment period, that's why it's important to comment. That's why it's critical. Those issues can only be raised in the protest period if they've commented and there's substantive comments. So this kind of lays out under two. This is what the protest shall contain. And so the reason why I'm bringing this up is that when you're actually formulating your comments, that's what we, Mr. De Leona and I have been doing is going through the Resource Management Plan. Statement of the issue or issues being protested. A statement of part of the plan or amendment being protested and all the documentation associated with it, such as attachments. And a concise statement explaining why the state directors of the Bureau of Land Management decision is believed to be wrong. So as going through this process, Mr. Chairman, I have found they have what's called BLM manuals, policy manuals, and Code of Federal Regulations that they are to abide by when they're doing the Resource Management Plan process. I've seen in the example of the Rollins protest, RMP, that it was brought up some of the things that weren't followed in that. One thing that's been quite apparent when I was going through this Resource Management Plan is that we adopted a federal lands resource plan last year. And that was not identified in the document and has not, and they're required to have a consistency review. So that's just an example of some of the things that were not followed. And Mr. Chairman, that's kind of what I've, I'm proposing as far as moving forward. Any questions or concerns on that?
Have you coordinated with CLG lawyer on this?
Yes, I've been going back and forth with Danielle. She's been giving some great information and advice as we're moving forward. I did see that in the coalition, she did forward some information in regards to areas of critical environmental concern to look at. And so, yes, she has been helping.
And isn't the deadline November seventeenth, not October?
I'll explain that if you want to, Mr. Chairman. So what I prepared for you is a letter just based on all the discrepancies that have been brought up and inconsistencies in the Resource Management Plan. These are just a few of the things that we are requesting in concert with the governor's letter that went out requesting withdrawal of the draft RMP. So, Mr. Chairman, what I've done is prepared a letter that states that due to, and I will read through this whole thing unless you want to. Me too, Mr. Chairman. But is identifying asking the Bureau of Land Management to draft, to withdraw the draft Rock Springs RMP based on the statements by the governor. And in addition, as a cooperator, we've identified through the cooperator process, all the hours that were put in in this, in the cooperators' process. And clearly, the selection of B was a complete disregard of the cooperator process and does not align with the Federal Lands Policy and Resource Management Act. That's another thing that, another document that is vital, which is to manage lands by multiple use. They are to abide by that. In addition, the ACEC process was not in compliance with forty three CFR sixteen ten dash seven two B. And that was there, that's the actual documentation in the Federal Register. They did list all the ACECs in there that they're proposing, but what they did not list for the public is the resource use limitations. So that's in conflict with that's Code of Federal Regulations. There's other ACCE processes that were not filed. Oh, there was a twenty six ACCECs that were, that were talked about in other meetings. And there's no documentation of that, any of the documentation that's online in their e-planning site. In addition, alternative B will be devastating to the socioeconomics of Sweetwater County. As you know, sixty seven percent of our land ownership is public, is BLM. So a public land decision is going to be very, especially when it constrains development of multiple sectors, including renewable energy and recreation, will decimate this local economy. The draft and in their own documentation, I believe Commissioner Jones stated was a devastation. And they stated in, in the actual document itself stating that reduced rates of development under alternative B could reduce the ability of the community and residents to achieve desired levels of community development and individual economic well-being. And so we are, our county objects to a decision on our public lands that will affect the economic prosperity of our community. So as far as the deadline, Mr. Chairman, the Commissioner Toman brought up, the October seventeenth is to, is a deadline. It's not the deadline of the Bureau of Land Management. That's our deadline for them to get back with us. So that we know how to proceed forward with comments. And so that's what the purpose of that deadline is for. And, Mr. Chairman, I do ask your consideration in this letter.
Yeah, and I believe in the governor's request to withdraw, he had that same October seventeenth deadline. So it's just kind of following suit with that. Lots of back and forth between Eric and John and all of us on the preparing this letter. And I think it was very well thought out. I think it kind of gets more into the the finer details, the substantive details on I guess the boots on the ground rather than just the loud noise that has everyone kind of up in arms on it. So I appreciate this approach. I think it'll be well received. We hope. We will release it to the media. This is kind of a fast moving train. And so we want to be as transparent as possible. But with advertising, you know, this agenda was advertised prior to the BLM open house last week. And so some of us were kind of waiting to see what came about with that before taking any direction. And so between then and now, this is where you know, this idea of this withdrawal request has came from. But certainly, once it's approved, we will release that out for your review and also to help keep the
The C C on there.
We can add that. I planned on forwarding and communicating with Danielle. Yes.
Is there any other comments, questions, Commissioner Richards?
Mr. Chairman.
Great job.
Just, just for my own clarification, in the protest rules, our previous comments through the entire process are, are grounds for protest if once they make their, their final ruling, and we don't have to have new, new comments through this period to protest their decision in that protest period. Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, you can have, it's everything through the planning process. This is considered part of the planning process. So you can so if we took a certain position on an ACEC or a removal, which we have, Cedar Canyon is an example of the Coalition of Local Governments objected to ACCE designation and the county supported that. That could be something that we could, we don't have to necessarily bring up, but we could go back to in the planning process and argue that the Resource Management Plan does not meet that. We can also identify in this period things that are not in compliance that we haven't brought up. So we can have this opportunity also to bring that up. So both.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Toman.
Well, I would just comment, that's why it was so important, our involvement with that coalition, because we have an ongoing record of comments that have been ratified and approved by the Conservation District and now the county. And now we do have a plan in place for the county that
Yeah.
gives the governor something to review for consistency. Thank you, Mr. De Leona Bingham. That was amazing. Amazing work.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jones.
Eric and maybe for John or both, but I know there's language that we're supposed to address areas where we're experts on as a commission, right? So there are some other things, and I don't know if this is, and I know I've shared this information with you all, but is it appropriate or not appropriate to refer? And I'm sorry, I'm coming late to the game on this. It just dawned on me minutes ago. But the mentioning things like the, them violating the Domestic Minerals Program Extension Act fifty three and nineteen seventy stuff and things that I shared with everybody, is that more appropriate coming from other organizations rather than us? Or do you think that's worthy of including the Minerals Policy Act of nineteen seventy, the Fed? Let's see, that one's in here, the Federal Lands Policy Management Act seventy six, Energy Policy Act two thousand and five. I think that's the most part of it. But those are also things that they violated. I don't know if that is appropriate coming from us, I guess, is the question.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Jones, and then I'll have Mr. De Leone weigh in on this also. And I was actually going to bring this up too was, you know, when we look at these areas that we're going to discuss also areas to focus, I think it's important that we involve those who are experts in those areas, you know? We have expertise in certain areas. And then just take, for instance, oil and gas. I don't have an expertise in that. What Mr. De Leona would like to do is, is get with those people that are experts and come and meet with them so that those come, you know, make sure that those comments are being addressed. Because I'd much rather coming from someone who is an expert in that field than and, and showing them the manual, this is what they're supposed to abide by when they're looking at plans. And then comment on those, giving them the tools so that they can do that. As far as I'll pass it over to Mr. De Leone as far as some of the acts that you spoke of.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Jones, so when you look at a protest and when you look at an appeal, one of the first things that they look at is whether you have standing. So, well, the first thing they do is they have a, they have a set of people in line that will look at the comments. First thing they'll make sure it's, it contains all the information that it's supposed to have, that Eric identified. If it doesn't have it, then they'll get rid of it. Then they'll look at standing, making sure that the individual has standing to protest or appeal. And so the, you as a board have standing, there won't be any real question about that. So you can include comments on all matters. And one of the things that, when you start looking at some of these different protests and appeals that have, have that there've been, they don't necessarily have a hundred different issues that were appealed on there. I'm looking at one now. I had two. There were two issues that made it to the surface. So as you're as Eric is receiving different information, different comments, it's valuable for him. And then I'll, I'm working with him to review those and see which ones are the, have the most traction and are the easiest for a director or for an appellate body to be able to say, that's clear, this wasn't done. This isn't a subjective weighing issue. It's an issue that is not just for management prescriptions, but also something that is mandatory to have been done. So I think it is, would be valuable for any expert in any field to be able to and, and anytime you're making a comment, it's helpful to be able to say, this is what the issue is. This is what the, the CFR, the whatever federal act or rule or regulation that was violated, to be able to point to something and say, this is where the problem is. So and then that to be supported by some fact, right? So I think it is appropriate for you as a board to be able to receive that information for Eric to be able to look through those, provide guidance for anybody that is an expert and work together to be able to find the best issues that are available so that those can be addressed during the protest period or any other appeals that take place. So, yes. The shorter answer is yes, it's valuable, but it's, it's also helpful to start prioritizing some of those comments and being able to, to feel like you have some grasp on, okay, these are our best issues that are clearly out there so that it doesn't necessarily water down or, or make a, the director or reviewing body just feel like it's ten thousand, you know, and there are, there are lots of errors. I think we, I think Eric has found a lot of errors already and is already starting to think about how to prioritize those errors. So the more, the better, but also prioritize.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would just add for Taylor, every time we ratify those CLG comments, you'll see all the references that Daniel makes to other laws and other cases.
Yep.
So she'll help find those for you.
Any other comments or questions regarding the letter or the process to this point, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
Again, just for, what, what you're basic, are you asking us to just approve your priority list that you want to focus, focus on, on these general process comments first? And then while we're waiting on the response from the BLM, from that, you'll, you'll, you'll work on the individual line item comments in the meantime.
So this is what I've been, and that's a great question. And I was one thing, the way that the Resource Management Plan is broken down and then Ms. Foster has talked about as far as commenting is there, there's those management actions. And the way that I look at those, it's kind of like a zoning code. Because it's telling you what you can do and you can't do, right? So that's in those management actions, those tables are the actual actions that they're going to say, whether they're closing down OHV roads, whether they're going to be, it's going to be an ACEC are in those management actions. The next section is the environmental impact statement, which says, because you, you're doing this, let's say you're shutting down OHV or you're, this area is going to be an ACEC, this is the environmental impact of that. Okay, so there's not a lot of time to, what I've been focusing on is the procedurals, what they've, what they have done, what they have not done as far as going through the process of establishing ACCECs. And that's the comment. Some of them can be towards if alternative B has gone too far and it doesn't meet their regulations, I'm going to point that out. I was not going, because there's just been so limited on time and we can between now and November sixteenth. Because I did do that. I started actually going through the management actions and it's just the amount of time that that takes and the two hundred pages that that is. I've been more focusing on the procedural and that's when I got with John. So the areas that are listed here, which is energy and minerals includes the right of way, because there's, there's really, the right of way extends through all a lot of the different areas. Transportation OHV, special designations, lands with wilderness characteristics is kind of where I've been wanting to focus to some of these areas where I'm not have, do not have expertise in soil research, geology and water quality and such. And then of course, again, in here is the consistency review will also be a part of it with our lands and resource plan. So that's the focus, if, if, if that's the focus you would, you would like, is going through that Resource Management Plan by management action in these sections, we can certainly do that, include it. But the primary focus has been this because they haven't, we have finding that they're not following all the policies and procedures.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Toman.
The socioeconomic analysis cooperators, well, we insisted that they use IMPLAN, which is a one point in time economic analysis. If you cut down half the jobs in the oil and gas field, there should be a dollar amount, but I see they've kind of watered down their, their they should put it in dollar amounts, how much that is going to cost somebody. And now we ask them to use IMPLAN or REMI, Regional Economic Model, which the state has that model for the whole state by region. The good thing about the REMI plan is it will project out for years ahead what's going to happen if you cut off half the oil and gas jobs. So I talked to Micah Christensen, maybe I can follow up again with the WCCA to see if he can check with the state and see if they could do an update on the economic of that REMI model. Alternative B wasn't analyzed after two thousand and sixteen. Alternative D was updated in two thousand and twenty two. So that tells you that probably the state and local people were thinking they were going to pick alternative D because they updated socioeconomic using those models. Alternative B has not been updated since two thousand and sixteen. I asked Kimberly and she said, well, it doesn't matter. It does matter. Ten years is huge. It's more than ten, you know. It's more than ten, you know, well, it's not quite ten years, but. The price at the pump, the gas and oil. But i- it seems that what I've been able to look at, and I'll dig into that more, that they, they kinda just gloss over the economic impacts to. The county of their decision to choose alternative B, which is. Huge, they're, they're supposed to. You know, how much is the lost tax, how much is the lost revenue to the counties?
Yeah.
Is not showing up. They said fifty percent of the jobs will be gone in oil and gas, well, what does that mean?
Yes.
And I, I know Danielle's working on that angle too, but I'll follow up with Mike, if, if there's any way he could get, and when we talk to the Governor on the twelfth, if they can. Get the REMI model through the State Economic Department to update that for alternative. B, based on the numbers that they've put in there, that would be huge.
Yeah.
And Commissioner, uh. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Toman, so ultimately, I, I mean, that is, that is huge, uh, using two thousand sixteen. Models.
Yeah, it's no big impact, yeah, yeah.
Clearly demonstrates the lack of, uh, participation. Uh, by the cooperating agencies, but ultimately you have to be able to identify, anytime there's a comment. Uh, it has to, it's helpful if it has the issue, uh, which would be, the issue there would be. Is that a, the, was there a failure of BLM? To, uh, properly analyze in accordance with. Their rules and regulations. And then if the answer is yes. Then to point to the rule or regulation which says that using the two thousand sixteen model. Can't be done.
Right.
So, that.
That's the biggest issue in there, cause you picked that alternative, and you stopped everything. It's dollars, it's a huge amount of dollars, and if they didn't update that to even show you how much loss.
And again, to, to, to translate that into a substantive, not just a, hey, you know, we don't, we don't like, we don't like this. This doesn't feel good, we have to translate it into a substantive comment, which means it has to be connected to what rule or regulation. Uh, does it violate? That is the. And that's what Eric is working on, that's the help that he's asking for, for any, from any, uh, experts. Is to be able to get them properly translated into a form which can have, uh, an act, can be effective. Uh, and fits the protest methodologies. Um, and isn't just saying, hey, we don't like this, uh, what? Regulation does that violate specifically? That's the help that I think Eric is asking for. Uh, from any experts, uh, that are out there to get those translated, and then we could, we can then. Look at all those and prioritize once those are received, and that would be a big one to get it connected to an actual. Regulation by, that is violated.
Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
I'd move that we approve and support Director Bingham's proposed priorities on responding to the draft Rock Springs. RMP beginning with. Authorizing the sending of the letters presented to the BLM requesting the withdrawal of the RSRMP and allowing the chairman to sign it.
I would second that.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Richards, we've got a second by Commissioner Toman, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion's unanimous. Appreciate your work on all this, Eric, John, and.
Yeah.
I think that's a very well-written letter, so. Once again, we'll continue to, uh, sort through the details, but I, I agree with the, uh, process moving forward and. Identifying those priorities and. It's kinda a waiting game, hurry and see, we'll see if the extension goes through, we'll see what the response is on this letter, but. I think it's the appropriate kinda boots-to-the-ground approach, so I appreciate your work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
For Chairman, I wanna thank Eric for, uh, he's got two printed copies, one in our office in here.
Yes.
If people wanna see the two volumes, one volume is maps and one volume is. Whatever, the other chapters, and he's got one in his office.
Mr. Chairman, um. Uh, Commissioner Jones, cause you brought this up earlier in your comments, the conservation map is in the, is in the Commissioner Room. Back there, so. We were able to print it out from downstairs, so, the Conservation District one, the.
Oh.
With the, with the transportation, I believe, so.
Oh, you found that map?
I think so.
Yep.
Yep.
Cause it had every trail and everything, then they took it off of the website.
See, you can be able to see it.
Ah. It's on, it's on that thing, that freaks Megan out.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
I just want, thank you, Eric, for all the work you've put in this, and, and Mr. De Leon, the work you've put in, put into it too. Uh, I know it's kinda, kinda overwhelming, your professional life, I, I, I think we got this last draft of this. Letter last night at nine PM after you worked on it, on it all day, and I, I appreciate that, and any, any help we can give, please, please reach out. You're, you're the expert, but. Our, our elected titles lend weight to that, and, and we'll give you whatever help you need.
Thank you, Commissioner Richards, appreciate that.
Any other comments, Commissioners? Eric, we appreciate your work.
Yeah.
It's one of the most important battles we'll ever face as a commission, cause it's our whole county that's affected. But I can't stress enough, Senator Cole, the fact that work that we have done has laid the groundwork for this. To go forward if we have to protest it.
That does wrap up our agenda today, Commissioners, um. Not quite ten thirty like we hoped, but important stuff, and, uh, we appreciate. All the attention. So with no further business. It is before noon. This meeting is adjourned.